Plaid to flag.
Plaid to flag. The United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call attendance, please?
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Terence.
Here.
Pepechi.
Here.
Mr. Suro.
Here.
Mr. Quino.
Here.
Mr. Maldari.
Here.
Here. Okay. All the members have received the minutes from the January sixth meeting. Need a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll move that.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay. Our first item on the agenda this evening is public hearing regarding Hindu Samaj amended site plan.
Hi, I'm Michelle Zerfus Burger Engineering.
Oh, sorry, that's right.
Sorry.
I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Some move.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, floor is yours.
Hi, so I'm Michelle Zerfus Burger Engineering. And the proposal is to add an additional parking lot to the site. The building itself will not change, there's no plans on changing. The number of people or the activities, it's just to provide additional parking for their bigger events. Right now they're parking in the grass and it turns to a mud pit and they have trouble getting people out, they have to get tow trucks. And then the other thing is, is to relocate the entrance drive.
Okay. Okay, won't we open up the floor, see if there's any public that has any comments regarding this project? Is there anybody in the audience that has, that wishes to speak? Okay, see if there's none. Won't we go through a couple of comments we discussed earlier, I guess regarding this? We'll start with the planner. Just, we had a couple of little things on the plan from the previous meeting.
Michelle, do you have a copy of our comments?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so you read the comment on the second page?
Yes.
We don't believe that that particular section of the code, which allows the planning board to waive landscaping requirements, applies in this case because the overall parking lot is 124 spaces and we can't look at just this one piece by itself. So you really have to comply with those sections of the code that you're looking for a way from.
Yes.
And we talked about the fact that there are a couple of striped islands, which could be converted to landscape islands.
That's an old dumpster, right?
Yeah.
Okay, the dumpster, they don't want to move because they just, they spend a lot of money, it's a big fancy dumpster enclosure. So that one can't be moved. We could, we could put an island, we could put trees in here, if you want a tree in here, that's, won't be a problem.
That would be good, and you're going to have to comply with those code sections. So if you don't make the other one an island, perhaps that's okay, it's okay with the board, but in total, we'd like to comply with those sections of the code.
Okay, so one of the sections was to have a shade tree, now does that comply with sections of the code for the existing parking lot? Is that the new parking lot or just the code and the new parking lot?
Are you saying that the...
Globally.
The existing parking lot doesn't comply? Is that what you're saying?
I didn't, I didn't look, the existing parking lot has, has this in the middle.
Were you the engineers of record at the time? Oh, okay, okay.
And then, and then it's got woods all along here, so they can't really plant any trees along here. And we moved it up to save the trees here.
If you, if you'd like my considered opinion, give me a call, we can talk about it, but I don't, I wouldn't want to make any...
Yeah, I don't think there was, I don't think there was much other than the islands, you know, the islands themselves.
That would be a start, but they have to comply with the whole...
Yeah, we had a que, yeah, I just have a question too as regarding, because it's been, it's been a while since I've been to that site. The dumpster enclosure, you said, was pretty significant. What, what's the type of construction of that? Is that a masonry? Is it a masonry enclosure with...
I can't remember, was it concrete or what was it? It's been a while since I've seen it. Whether it was a concrete wall or it's a white smooth walls around it with a pretty significant door on the front of it.
Okay, so it's not a, it's not the older, you know, the chain link fence?
It's not the chain link fence, it's not the plastic fence that's half falling over with the gate that's hanging off, it's not that either.
Okay, so, so it is something that, there was some, so it's actually pretty nice and not, something that's probably not going to get beat up over, over time.
No, because initially I was, what if I needed to bring the drive down there and they said, "No, don't." But that's a significant one, that it's not just a easy to move.
Yeah, our concern wasn't that whether it was attractive or not, it was just a safety issue. That's all it's about. If they're comfortable that it's, it's not a safety issue for them?
No, it's got some, a little bit of space for people going around there. That I can, yeah, it's just a matter of figuring out where to plant trees.
Right. So as Lisa said, it's for the whole site?
For the whole site.
For the whole parking area?
Okay, including the existing?
Exactly, yes.
Which in theory was complying when it was built, so hopefully you only need to deal with the edge, but it's...
Or should have been.
There's a chance that it may not be made out of the...
Well, it may have been built before, but I don't know when the regulations came.
Regulations have not changed in forever.
In forever, okay. Okay, so I'll have to, I'll have to discuss with you to try to save the existing trees.
Sure.
And I believe that would be the only real comment that I've come up with.
That's our only real comment, yes.
And then, as far as your comments?
Yeah, our, our only, our only comment was to just make the two radiuses, the two curb, curb radiuses the same on the new driveway. And I think you met with the highway superintendent?
I met with the highway superintendent, he approved the location. I checked with Central Hudson to see if we can get that pole moved. And Central Hudson would be okay, or get rid of it, because it's just a guy pole, it's not a...
Oh, okay.
Originally I thought it was a power line, but it's not. Central Hudson would be okay, but it's also a 50-50 pole with Verizon. And Verizon, they said, "Oh, they're going to look into it and they'll get back to me," so I'm not sure when that will be. So what I'll do is I'll make the entrance with the two, for your comments.
Yeah.
And by the time we go to construction and Verizon says to get rid of the pole, we'll put in the grill.
I mean, I don't, I mean, it's up, it's really up to, up to the highway superintendent, but it almost looks like the one side, on, on the left side is almost too, you know, county-like standards. And I was just looking to get the curb set back two to three feet off of the edge of the road, just, just so the snowplow doesn't hit it.
Right.
So I would just make them both, you know, the same, whatever that ends up to be, it is, and as long as the highway superintendent is happy with it, then that's fine.
Yeah, and I know one of your files was, I get letters, so once I find out from Verizon, I can get a letter from the highway superintendent.
Yep.
And then one other thing is, next month will be the March meeting. And the deadline to cut trees is the end of March. So for next month, if I could get permission for them to be able to cut trees. And the area of tree cutting would be... There'll be a couple of trees here. Some trees up in here and then the sewer line, there'll be several trees in there.
Right, that was the, um... The tree, the submission you had made with the colored...
Right, that didn't show the sewer line, which would just be a straight through the trees.
Okay, so you'd be asking to cut down, it looks like, one? Cut down six trees?
That'd be six or seven there and then there'd be some more... Running from here down to the sewer line, and I don't know how many in there it would be.
So why don't you send to the board a precise with the proposal and then we'll also need the, a bonding amount, so prior to, we'll have to...
Right, so it's kind of, we're kind of unprepared to pass that, but the problem, like, the problem that you're bringing up is that we'd have to do, it's, we only have the one meeting this month.
Yes.
You would have to get a submission in, in time for the beginning, for the first meeting in March. And then, assuming we have everything together, if we approve it, it would give you a window to get things cut down by the end of March.
Right, then give us...
Prior to the, uh, which I think is probably the best bet.
Right, so I've got the letter, I don't know if you need any more plants?
Are you familiar with the sections of the code that, that this...
I can, I can something together to keep around?
Do you familiar with that section of the code?
Actually, if you, if you want, I have an extra copy right here. This is the requirements for tree felling. All right?
Yeah, because they don't have site plan.
So you have it, that's, we're basically looking for that, that info, well, that would be the information you would need in order to move forward, to cut down trees prior to the, the deadline by the DEC for the Indiana bat.
It's okay if I can give this letter to B, just so I can start looking at the bond amount, think about what the bond amount is?
Yeah, that'd be fine, I mean, you give it, yeah. Yeah, you'd have to give it to B for a submission, then she could send it out to everybody.
Just so that I, it needs to be different when I submit, that I can see where...
And she either need a tree felling permit or get site plan approval and fulfill all the conditions before...
So she has, they have to have a signed site plan in order to go out and clear...
They've got to have their conditions in the site plan.
So, okay, so you're basically going to have to make the re-submission anyway. It sounds like you probably need to re-address what's on the, on the plan, just a couple items in terms of landscaping. Discuss it with Mr. Stolman to get that taken care of. And then, I guess you'd come back, assuming for the first meeting in March.
You never know.
B, what would be the, that meeting date?
June, March 2nd.
March 2nd.
March the 2nd, okay. Well, well, yeah, I guess at this point, we'd probably get a motion to adjourn the public hearing at this point, being nobody's...
They're leasing.
Actually, we might... Barbara, would it be, is it possible to close the public hearing at this point?
Yes.
Yeah?
Keep in mind...
There's no...
Keep in mind when applicants ask for the tree felling, that whatever bond is accepted also then has to be accepted by the town board at their next meeting.
Okay.
So... I've got to keep that in mind.
So that's going to take, makes it a little tighter, a window to work.
Does it have to be approved by the planning board before I go to the town board?
Yeah.
Talk to see what the town board...
Just so that we see the dates, if you need more seconds, so that we can go until the first meeting, then we can put the time to...
Yes.
And that's, and that's the second one?
Right.
So March 9th would be the town board meeting that you would, could possibly get approval of?
Yeah, and I'll have something at least attractive to you by the end of the term.
Okay.
Okay.
And Bruce, we think you can close the public hearing today, since there was no public comment.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that there's no, there's no clock regarding, regarding the, the public hearing at this point?
No.
Okay. All right, so get a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries.
So I guess then the only other question for the board is whether you want to authorize a resolution or you want to see what the applicant comes back with in terms of landscaping and then potentially authorize a resolution?
I think we could authorize the resolution with a contingency. This way it's prepared. Because she is running out of time.
Well, here's the, well, this raises the question, if we, if we authorize the planner to write the resolution and we're voting on an approval at the next meeting, the tree felling, well, almost, almost is a non-issue at that point because assuming they can meet the conditions of the plan, or the conditions within the resolution, they can get...
Can we put a writer on that approval by the planning board?
You know, if, 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 for example, they don't get the landscaping right, it could take a while for the plan to get signed by the planning board chairman.
Right, I just, yeah, I don't know...
It's better to run on both tracks and be safe.
Just do both and be safe, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so we'll go ahead and do that. We'll let them continue forward for the, the tree felling. And if everybody feels comfortable, we'll take a vote, see if you guys want to authorize the planner to write the resolution for, that'd be the March 2nd meeting, for a resolution of approval. So, we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
We have second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. If you set up the plan over there so that the camera over here can pick it up, we appreciate it. Oh, yeah, we, sorry, we did make a motion to close the public hearing.
Some move, second.
Didn't we do that? No? Okay. Motion's made and seconded. We forgot to close the public hearing, apparently. Okay, I thought we did, but we didn't, so, was, motion, Robert made the motion. Robert and Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay. Our next item on the agenda this evening is public hearing for Nussbickel Brothers Realty Site Plan Lot Line Realignment. Need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Good evening.
I'm Dan Kohler with Hudson Land Design, we're the engineer for the applicant. To my right is Mr. Nussbickel, he's the owner applicant of the property. We have a relatively simple application before the board this evening, we have control of several parcels on the east side of Route 9 and the west side of Old Route 9. And we're looking to combine those property lines as a result of several of those property lines going through existing buildings. So that would be cleaning up the parcels, so the lot lines shown in red represent existing property lines that will be extinguished. And the lot lines shown in blue here and here would represent the proposed property lines, so we'd be left with three parcels. Each building would be contained fully within each parcel with their wells and their septics as well. So there's two different planning components here before us. We have a lot line consolidation, which the town considers as a subdivision, and we also have a, an amended site plan application, which is to bring these sites into compliance with regard to the parking requirement. The exhibit on the left is Lot 1, which is the northernmost lot, and what we need to do is provide five additional parking spaces to make the lot compliant. And the exhibit on the right shows the lot line between Lots 2 and 3, and we're proposing additional parking on that, on both of those lots as well, to bring them into compliance with the zoning code. One of the things we discussed at the recommendation of the Dutchess County Department of Planning was actually having those as land bank parking, which makes sense because we are not over, we're not underparked at this moment. And, and so what we've done is we've developed the plan to show these as land bank parking for future, if we need big, so that would be the site plan component that is before the board.
Okay. At this time, we'll open up the floor if there's any public comment regarding this application. Okay, seeing there's no public comment, um... Any of the board members have any questions regarding this project? Okay, good. All right, so we have the, actually the planner, if you want to, is there any, do you have any concerns?
No, really, no, no.
Everything is now...
Yes.
Satisfactory, Matt, all the, all the recommendations in the letter have been...
Everything's been resolved.
Okay.
Same here.
Okay. Attorney, it's good too?
All good.
Okay. All right, seeing that everything's in order, get a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And we're satisfied, get a motion to have the planner write a resolution of approval for the project?
I'll make that.
There are two resolutions, one for the lot consolidation, or the lot line changes, and then one for the site...
The site plan.
amended site plan.
I'll make that motion first.
I'd like the resolutions.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, we're all set.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda this evening is discussion regarding site plan, lot line consolidation, and special use permit for Gasland Petroleum on Route 9D in Houstonville.
Good evening, my name is Christopher Lupin with the Chasing Company, representing the applicant, Gasland Petroleum this evening. With me is Sam Laverme, who is also the design engineer for the project. We're both going to be going back and forth on some of the presentation this evening, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you have. With us this evening is also both Mitch Nejwot and Zidane Nejwot, representatives of Gasland Petroleum, who can also assist in answering any questions you may have with them and their business of this project. Gasland Petroleum is not unfamiliar to the town of Opferge, they've worked on a number of projects here on Route 376 near the airport. We have the project that you've recently approved, Myers Corners Road, and also on 376 going towards the potential of the project eight, so we built, so. With this particular project in particular, we're looking to acquire four parcels of land on Route 9D, totaling 1.24 acres. Parcels are in the Hamlet mixed-use district. The parcels consist of three residents on there and a bar. The intent of the particular project is to create a convenience store with apartments over the top of it and gasoline station with four fuel pumps. Access to the site would be via Route 9D. The overall project itself would have two single-bedroom apartments on the, on the second floor, and a 2,700 square foot convenience store on the first floor. The actual convenience store itself would be 2,500 square feet, because 200 square feet of that would be used for access to the second floor apartments for the project. The site would be served by septic disposal systems initially, which based on our current study of the project area, seems to be that it could support the convenience store only. It's the goal of the project, to eventually connect to the water line on New Hamburg Road. And eventually, working with the town, there will be some creations of easements in the rear of the property for future sanitary sewer or water for the benefit of the other property owners along the Route 9D corridor. There's a lot of planning that's going to go into that over the next year, we understand that from some of our initial dialogue with the town. But we've shown on our site plan, that's before you, some potential locations of easements for water and sanitary sewer connections for this project. I'm going to let Sam discuss the access and the stormwater managers for the project.
Okay, so the plans that, sorry, Samantha Laverme. So the plans that we submitted show a left in, left out, which was directed by Mazor Consulting, but after discussion with the DOT, they determined that the left entrances and exits will not be permitted. So we'll have to do a right in and right out, which will be shown probably next submission. We also provided parking in the rear. We have 17 parking spaces in the rear and then four under the canopy. We have angles, pumps to allow for easy vehicle maneuvering, we also have one-way access around the building. In the back, we also have a loading area for the tractor-trailer and box trucks. That little knockout that you see that's striped, that will be the loading area, and it also provides easy backup for the trucks so that they can easily exit the site. And then for stormwater, we have a redevelopment project based on the DEC manual. The hardscape of the site will be collected onsite and treated with either a sand filter, which is in the front of the site, or a fire attention area, which is in the rear, except the roof runoff from the building and the canopy will be collected separately and infiltrated using infiltrators in the front of the site.
The intention with this particular project and the architecture for this project is we're looking to blend something that's reminiscent of the other character of the dwellings and structures within this Hamlet district. We don't have an architectural elevation with us this evening, the architect is working on that. We gather it's going to be a series of iterations working with the board on this, because we do want to capture the vision of this particular area, so we'll provide that in our next submission to the board. We are trying to incorporate sidewalks along the frontage of our property. The right-of-way in this area is very narrow, and, and what we hopefully envision for this particular area, as other project parcels in here are redeveloping, is that we can have a continuous sidewalk path for pedestrians along the Route 9D corridor. And so what we've shown on our particular project is, we've shown sidewalks within our property line, basically because the right-of-way line is the edge of the shoulder of the DOT's roadway. We've shown how that then connects into, not only into the convenience store, but also that comes around for our residents, the two apartments in the back as well. Perhaps there could be future connections to other parcels in the rear as this project goes along the review process, but, you know, it's something that we see as key to this project, is some sort of pedestrian connectivity, not with other parcels along this... And I think at this point, we'd kind of like to open it up to the board to kind of get a feel for any comments you may have. I, actually, I'd be remiss to forget to mention that the project does require potential two variances. We do have a side yard setback of 50 feet, which we're approximately 24 feet away from. And also in the front yard setback, your code states anything along a state road requires a 75-foot setback. Understanding that this is a particular Hamlet area and looking at the uniformity of the other buildings along the Route 9D corridor, they fluctuate between, some are actually encroaching in the right-of-way, there is no setback, to probably within 10 feet. Your code gives the discretion of the planning board to, I guess, I don't necessarily know if it's wave or, or allow the proposed encroachment, if it's something that's acceptable and uniformity with the other dwellings and, or buildings along that corridor. So we believe that the 34 feet that we're currently showing, which is greater than some of the other buildings that once again fluctuate between 0 and 10 feet, is acceptable for this project, but we'd be willing to work with you if you believe it needs to be closer. One of the things that we've considered when we've laid out this building is site distance, and our client would like to have at least some visibility of his fueling operations for the viability of his sub-business.
In terms of the variance, well, in terms of the setback, I believe they still need to get the variance that correct, it's, we just can't wave.
For the side.
Yeah. Yeah, so we would still, that would still need to go to the zoning board.
Plus the front yard, is that something that...
You said you need a side yard variance?
Is it a side yard or a rear yard?
I think it's the side yard. It was mentioned as a rear yard in the...
I mentioned it as a rear yard. Which yard is it?
It's over here.
Okay, so, yeah, that's the side.
We have 24.3. We have twenty-four point three.
You need a side yard variance, right?
Yeah.
And as you said, Chris, the planning board can allow the other...
The other one, but I have to go and get...
ZBA for a side yard variance.
Still have to get the, right.
It's, listen, I, it's, I'm sharing with you, that's all based upon the layout that's before you. And I realize this is our first submit before you, there may be other iteration of this plan, but based on that, this is what I can offer to you.
All right. Well, to open it up to the board members, if anybody's got any questions regarding with the current proposal.
I'd like to see the rendering of the designs, because, I mean, what's there now really is unattractive. And, you know, actually, I think that'd be a good thing. Not only those buildings that are there, but whatever goes up, you know, needs a look.
Yeah.
Toward, like we were discussing before, there's some, there's some gas stations in Hyde Park that probably would fit to what we're looking at here.
Yeah, I think they have a few, in terms of the canopy, just not like a... I guess being that you're in this Hamlet area more, as you said, something that fits the architecture and the area.
Yeah.
But also just not, I guess, that would also include the gasoline canopy also.
Correct.
So it wouldn't be your standard...
I think some people have mentioned earlier, we had a meeting prior, that during our workshop meeting, it was brought up that it should be something, not a standard commercial and with, you know, flat panels, it should be blended in with the community.
I think the one you maybe referred to in Hyde Park, is that the one on Parker Avenue and nine, Route nine?
Yeah, there's a couple up there that are actually attractive.
That was one that Gasland did.
Okay.
In Hyde Park, and they were, they won a architectural award for retail modification of the year.
Okay. You know, also, we're also gonna ask the town historian just to look, to see if there's any historical significance involving any of the buildings that are being proposed to be taken down. Assuming that you've already looked into whether or not any of them are, you know, registered landmarks, which I don't think that any of them are, but...
They're not registered, but the areas of historical significance, so we have to start our dialogue with SHIPBO on the property. What we've, we've held off on doing that until we start... We want to get some feedback from you first off, before we reach out to them as to other... If there's any elements you think we might need to incorporate up front that would show some disturbance outside of what we're already showing.
Okay, I think we're, we're gonna reach out to the, they said we'll reach out to the historian just to see if there's anything that, you know, that we have any, the town has any records regarding anything in that area.
Okay.
Then we'll give you recommendation after that to, whether I think should be incorporated into the project, being it is early.
Would it behoove the applicant, if I understand you're gonna probably do some homework behind the scenes on this, if his architect was to come before the board and at least start showing you some examples of what he's considering for architecture while you're still doing some investigations on the site plan?
Yeah, I think that'd be acceptable. Yeah, we can, you know, we would accept input, you know, at least see what he's proposing, and then we can give input upon his design.
Okay.
That would probably be a good idea at a future meeting.
Okay.
Do you wanna mention anything about lighting levels?
Yes.
I know we've had those issues with fuel stations.
So, you did receive the letter from both the planner and engineer, and I know in the planner's letter, it does mention looking for photometric plan of what's being proposed. I know we have been working a lot, and I think over the past year with different gas stations to resolve a standard for the town. But we're looking, you know, at this being in the middle of a residential area. We just wanna ensure that the lighting levels are, you know, to a, an allowable level. We don't want anything overpowering. That way the neighbors aren't, you know, you know, being blinded at night with light coming through their, through their windows.
We're not going to, we're gonna be very respectful of neighboring properties. We were when we did the last project before you, Route 376, where we had neighbors. We understand the concerns with glare. And we do understand full cutoffs, there will be recessed lighting beneath the canopy. There will be none of those flat panels that hang down beneath that, which has the ability to create light between the sixty and ninety degree, which creates that annoyance or obstruction that you're referring to.
Okay.
We will utilize 3,000 K lighting fixtures on here, which is starting to become a normal, normal recommendation of most lighting plans, they no longer want the heavier lights, the 4,000 K or 5,000 K. So we'll take that into account, and as I said, we'll have any full cutoff fixtures. The one thing that we've been a little hesitant in terms of doing the lighting plan is this is your, this is a Hamlet district, and I'm assuming you're gonna have some sort of a vision for what your own lighting fixtures are gonna be, so that you have some consistency between future projects. Now, what one does is you want the next person to do it and reiterate. And I guess, one of the things I was gonna ask the board, or maybe if I could work with your consultants, if you guys have any ideas as to what you think those particular lights you may be thinking about along this corridor. You know, this is a great opportunity for the town, I think, and for us as a whole, is to try to create something that's consistent along there in uniform. I mean, we're, the goal here eventually is, you know, if we can create some uniformity in terms of sidewalk, it's uniformity in terms of whether you do stone walls or certain types of landscaping, and, you know, let's, let's also increase that to add the lighting along the corridor. So that's why we haven't given, run into the full photometrics and light specifications, because we're hoping we can also get some input from you so that we can start producing something that you can actually sink your teeth into.
All right, well, we are actually on one of the other projects that we have in front of us. We're gonna be going out, hopefully within the next month or so, we're gonna go out do a field trip, because we're, we're still working on lighting levels. You know, in terms of, you know, number of foot candles, there's still some debate on, on the amount that should be, you know, allowed or needed, you know, especially for gas stations and actually other properties also. But right now, the one application that we have is regarding a gas station. And we wanna try to, you know, go out and do some field evaluation to see what, what levels would work for the board. And once we get that, we will pass that along to you.
Yeah, and some of the studies we've recently done is we've, we've seen kind of the ten-foot candles that have the cutoff for a gas station, and anything lower than that is what's recommended. You don't need the twenty-foot candles, fifteen-foot candles, twenty or thirty-foot candles at a gas pump. You know, I deem it hazardous material, but you can work with an entire foot candles and everything's visible in terms of placing, you know, filling your dispenser, working out the credit card machine as well.
Okay, yeah. All right.
Yes, I had a couple things, or you wanna finish?
Do you wanna, I don't know if any other members have any?
The two one-bedroom apartments, what are they, just for the general rental?
Correct.
I'm sorry.
To the general public?
To the general public.
Okay.
All right. And that was the other question, was it the hours of the gas station, was that, was that in the...
Right now, it's proposed as twenty-four hours.
It's proposed as twenty-four hours, okay. All right, which, which I guess we'll have to discuss at some point.
Initially, you're gonna be well in septic?
Initially, we would be septic. We do understand that the water line, I think possibly in 2021, may have the ability for individuals to tap into. We envision this, the review of this process going into 2021, based on the plans you have before you, so...
Do the apartments require fire suppression?
I'm gonna have to hand that off to the architect.
And what kind of heat are gonna be in these two rentals?
I'm not prepared to answer that, it's more of an architectural question. I've only been asked to do everything outside the building. They don't let me in.
All right. Okay, so maybe we will have to, I guess, at some point, discuss the twenty-four-hour operation in that area.
I, I will ask the architect though on your other questions, if he, maybe he can give you some ideas about those.
All right. Anybody else have anything? Turn this over to the engineer.
Well, you had mentioned about the traffic flow inside the area. Is there anything you wanna see there change on that, or stick with that now?
Yeah, I'm prob, well...
I think with big trucks, that's about the only way to do it, to get the tanker trucks in there, right?
Just got some crossover.
Yeah, it's, yeah, we, during our workshop earlier, we were discussing it, and it's kind of a... The entrance, when you, when you pull in, it's kinda awkward, because you're going, when you're pulling into the, into the site, in order to get, I guess, you kinda have some traffic that kinda goes to the... When you go, you go in, you go to the left across the front of the store into the parking lot, and then you have everybody exiting out. It's just, the traffic pattern just is a little, could, could possibly be a little cumbersome, that's all.
Cross traffic.
Yeah. Cross traffic, and they, when you're, when you're entering, when you're entering the site, 'cause you do go, you do have the ability to go straight, but there's also the ability to make that, right, to make that turn there. And it might just be the way we're looking at the plan, but it's just, you see the, how you have the arrows on the plan. Right, so if they were being directed across the front of the store, we're just concerned about cars looking to exit and then coming across that path.
Yeah, so I think it was what Sam was alluding to earlier, that is gonna be restricted to one-way in only. And the reason why that's restricted to one-way in is it's because as the car's coming in at an angle, that's the way in which they're going to access.
Right, you're gonna have to exit the pump from that direction. Right. All right, now, if anybody...
Didn't you have the pumps in angle?
The pumps are underneath.
Yeah.
So that, yeah, it didn't...
Yeah, they are at an angle.
Yeah, so that kinda cures that, right?
Yeah, it kinda does, yeah. It's like a double, it's like, it's kinda a double-edged sword, 'cause you're gonna have to go in, and they actually, some people are gonna go straight in anyways, and try to, they're gonna try to loop back around to get to the other side of the pump. Yeah, that's, it's gonna be kinda, it's, I don't know, I mean, I don't know, Ralph, how you, how you feel about it, but you just wanted to relook that, maybe...
Is that the only configuration you guys come up with with the pump location?
One of the concerns we had with putting the pumps kind of in parallel lines was the depth that was necessary for those in parallel lines. And our thought process was the rear of the vehicles would be encroaching upon the means of egress that are coming around this particular location here. So if this was straight, the back end of the car would be sticking out.
Yeah.
So that's why we, we looked at the angular location for it.
I was just wondering if you turned the whole thing at like ninety degrees, would that make it more easier for the traffic flow in and out?
We can look at that. I'd probably not appoint the comment, because I think it's a tweaking to have to do with that in terms of relocating where pumps are. And understand the impacts on, not only the renovability of the passenger vehicles, but the loading.
If you could look at it and just, you know, if there's a possibility. All right. Good, okay. All right, so when we turn this over to the engineer, and where's...
You wanna go with something, go ahead.
No, no.
Are you, are you ready to...
Yeah, yeah.
Who do you want to go first?
I know, I know Pete had some comments, but if you're, if you...
All right, well, why don't I go first? Have you had, Chris, have you had any discussions with the county board of health in regards to, you know, the holding tank? I know I haven't had very good luck on residential stuff.
We have, and they reached out to us, and our logic behind the holding tank was simple, I told them. If the officials sewer come in maybe a year or two away, it would only be temporary. The DOT has told us that temporarily, or not, they wouldn't allow a holding tank.
Yeah.
The site team informed us that on Thursday, Friday of last week. So we understand that. The applicant is still willing to proceed with at least stubbing out for future sanitary facilities. We understand we'd still have to construct in this area, we'd still have to construct entire shell of the building, all the windows, but obviously, we can't do any renovations without the benefit of sewer for the project.
Well, you know that like sewer is probably more than like a year or two off, just you and I, you and I have talked about some of the things that are going on.
And, and as I said earlier, I, I...
Don't bank on that, right, in the short term?
We're not banking on it, we, we do believe that we've done enough of an investigation for the onsite soils to support the convenience store. We also believe with trying to under, you know, the water for this particular project's not available for over a year, so we know we're still doing the review process for over a year.
Yeah.
So, you know, between now and then, a lot of things can change. But our, the applicant, you know, is committed to working with the town, understanding the sewer improvements, and we know we're gonna have to make our contributions as future tenants of any sort of sewer district as well.
Okay. And the SWIP will be forthcoming at some point in the future?
The SWIP will be forthcoming in the future, I think, you know, we didn't wanna go too far down the road and wanna get some more input from the board, and, you know, you know, the architecture of the building can, can change the actual footprint of the building as well.
Right. No, that's fine.
This, this was a good point though, Pete, that you did bring up, and we are not within a united...
Yeah.
And we would have to petition the town board for that.
And so the EAF would just have to be updated for that one question.
Correct.
That was it for me for now.
Okay, David?
Sure. Chris, I don't mean to put you on the spot, and you don't have, don't have to have an answer right now, but in your initial letter, how did you figure that you need a side yard of fifty feet?
Let me go to my bulk requirements. We had a side yard setback of fifty feet, we...
How do you figure you need that?
Based on the zoning board.
I don't see it that way, so let's talk about that.
I mean, we interpreted the section of it, but...
I don't know. But it's not for certain, so you may not need as much of a variance as you think you need.
I thought, didn't, wasn't something doubled, didn't you have to double something?
That's what they were just talking about.
That's right.
Okay.
I thought that, that was our interpretation, that that got doubled because of the residents.
Well, the side yard in the HM district, oh, because of the residents? The residents onsite, do you mean?
In the back.
Oh, okay.
And in the side.
If you, if you doubled it, it's twelve. We can go, we, we don't do this now, but I'm not sure you actually need fifty feet, but let's sort that out.
Okay, yeah, as I said, we doubled it. If we're wrong, my client would love to hear that.
It's for the better, yeah. We need a subdivision plat, I think Chris knows all these things. We need a subdivision plat, we need elevations of the building itself and the canopy. We need a lighting plan, a landscaping plan. You mentioned you're gonna be in contact with SHIPBO, and you'll be in contact with the DEC as well, and we'd like to get copies of all the correspondence. And we've got a couple of comments regarding truck and emergency vehicle templates that we need to see on the drawings.
Okay.
That's pretty much it.
I, I, we'll also give you a breakdown, we'll do a description of the bug rating for the proposed lights as well, and kinda break them down for the site. Maybe we'll work with you to kinda figure out what kind of lighting we should be looking at.
Sure. LED lighting, 3,000 Kelvin or less?
Got that so far, I just don't know the type of fixture.
All right.
That's the top one, so... All right, I, I think we've gotten some really good input this evening. We're gonna charge our architect with coming back before you. I'm sorry, I interrupted, I'm gonna need you to speak.
Sorry, go ahead.
I apologize.
No, actually, we were just saying, there's no legal yet.
I'm sorry. So I, I think we got some really good input. We're gonna charge our architect, we're coming up with some concept sketches and submit to you for discussions going forward, and we'll work on some of the stuff behind the scenes.
Okay, um, I guess this point, eh?
Circulate for lead agencies?
Yeah, we, so I was just gonna say, I just saw Lisa's hand, that's why I just, that was- Okay, so we're gonna, yeah-
Do you want, for any reason, you would prefer we hold off on circulating?
Uh, I would like to, but I, circulate for leadership, but I believe I need to send you an updated EAF. Part one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll wait for the updated EAF then?
But if the board wants to authorize the circulation, which we receive it, that's fine.
Once it comes, we could circulate.
Yeah.
So it's authorized the secretary to submit, uh-
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
For lead agency pending the rivalry revise the AAF. Okay, so Ralph's made the motion, who seconded it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, okay, so motion carries.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda this evening is, um, Nairpolding Tractor Supply Company and Retail Store.
Good evening.
Chairman.
Good evening.
To the board, for the record, E. Alexander Cuddy and Fader, along with me here is the engineer of record, Jim Cassidy, and Matt Darling from New England Retail. Um, so, it's been, I think, arduous journey for everyone involved. Um, we, we received our approval from, from, from the, from you and the zoning board and the town board, um, through August, September, and, uh, August and September. And we've been working on all the conditions of approval. Um, since then, um, we believe we've actually met all the conditions of approval for the chairman to sign the site plan and, um, even as moving towards building permit, if you look at subsection three of the approval resolution, we even have our DOT approval as well.
Okay, and has that been submitted to the town yet?
I'm not a hundred percent certain if the DOT approval, okay, we just got it last week, it hasn't been submitted yet.
Okay.
So, we've also gotten caught betwixt and between here in the sense that although there's no formal requirement in the resolution, in our opinion, relative to needing, needing a DOH, um, approval, um, there's been a request for that before we are issued a building permit and we're not able to get our DOH approval until either Tri-Muni Sewer or the town issues a will serve, um, letter. Um, it's our understanding there have been absolutely no accedences by the Tri-Sewer Muni, uh, Tri-Muni Sewer at any point in time and that there is plenty of capacity, both in dry, in all dry weather and on measurements on a monthly basis and quarterly basis for all wet weather, but we haven't been able to get that. So with the fact of the matter that the tree cutting season is going to close on March thirty first, we applied, uh, for the third time actually, recently, um, for a tree felling permit. If you remember, we, a year ago, we were having a conversation like this and then we went entirely through the entitlement process. Um, and in November, we said, you know, we really need a tree felling permit and everyone sort of said, no, you're almost there, you're almost there. Well, we've gotten caught in this loop with Tri-Muni Sewer and DOH and no one wanting to go first. So where that leaves us is, we believe we're close at getting that unraveled, but it's not gonna get unraveled before March thirty first. And certainly, it's not gonna get unraveled in time to get a contractor out there, do the coordination with the town in order to take the trees down. Um, we are actually going to the Tri-Muni Sewer meeting at eleven o'clock in the morning on, um, this Thursday to talk with them. We've been in contact with their attorney as well, we've also been provided with copies of all meeting minutes since October of Tri-Muni to try and see and understand what is going on. Um, there are two other projects being held, um, one is a religious use actually, and it's been for over a year, so, um, that's interesting. Um, ultimately, where all this comes back to is we need this tree felling permit and we need it tonight, candidly. Um, we submitted back in March of twenty nineteen, um, the town engineer reviewed our bond estimate and signed off on that. We gave that copy of that to you again. Um, and we, we meet all the preconditions in the, in the code section and if we can't get this done literally for six months, the site goes sideways and we can't build. And there are liquidated damages and other contractual penalties to us if we can. So, we're begging your indulgence, we believe we've fulfilled all of the conditions of your tree filling exception and we feel like, candidly, this is exactly the legis, meets exactly the legislative intent of why this was created in the past eighteen months. So we'd ask you for it.
Okay. Alright, well, with the request, um, for this, I guess there's, there was some discussion, uh, a few meetings back, we were just talking about this project. And one of the things was that I think the board had, there was a little oversight by the board. We, we felt there was a need, uh, for well testing in that area. And, the question comes up is whether or not the tractor supplier would be willing to test the neighboring property wells.
I, I mean, I can't force a third party to let us onto the property.
And we, and we understand that, but at least that, that there's an offer or, you know, something from them saying that, you know, that they're refusing it.
I mean, I, I think, I don't think we're gonna say no to most anything, I think the issue is the timeline of when that testing comes to occur.
We're not looking to drag this on beyond the tree felling, we're just asking that if that would be something you'd consider.
That we could put, yeah, we could put down just- The people that live there have a baseline and they know where their water's at now, because that was one of their concerns, was contamination from there.
Right, and it's one of the reasons why we're trying to do sewer, right, instead of septic.
Well, that wasn't their biggest concern, they were all worried about your pollutants on the property.
But in that way, it would protect everybody, give them a baseline, give, you know?
I, I, I think, you know-
Everybody would be happy.
I, I think the bottom line is, is if that's something you'd like us to do concomitant with the issuance of a building permit, we'd be more than amenable to, to doing that in a reasonable fashion. Um, we'll make the offer, um, I, I don't think every single house needs it.
Not everyone, just the perimeter of your property.
We're not saying both sides of the street, we're just saying that any of the neighboring properties that have a well.
Yeah, I mean, I think-
It's like six wells or maybe, I don't, I'm not sure how many.
Yeah, it was not, yeah.
I think it was eight, right?
Now, look, if you look at the side here, I mean, you go down the property.
I don't think you, I, I, I don't think-
It's like you have seven right there.
I mean, I, I don't know. I'm not gonna call over whether it's three or seven, I, I, I don't think you need all seven to know for all seven, I mean, because-
Well, that would be your call, we're just requesting.
Yeah, I, I think we're more than willing to work with the neighbors who are willing to work with us to, to do some testing.
And that could be completed prior to the issuance of a building permit, if we tie it to that.
Yes.
That would be good.
Fair, is it a fair compromise?
Yeah.
Okay. Was it good?
I'm good with it.
Alright. So in terms of, uh, so in terms of the, the tree felling exception at this point, um, have you made a, uh, you've met, obviously you have some of these things in place.
I think we've-
You've made a full ex-
Yeah, we made a full submission.
Submission for, um, all the items on here.
Yes, and the good, the good part of it here is, remember, there's a fully reviewed and approved SWIP as part of the actual project approval. And really, tree clearing is the first step and was analyzed as part of the SWIP. So we're just implementing like one A or, you know, for, for convenience.
Well, well, it's, well, I mean, we, all we have right now is we're, we're bound, just, just to be clear, because we have to follow the, we have to follow the town law. We just have to follow what's in, in the town call, in the town code.
Right.
And that's, you know, section two forty dash ninety three point one, that we're just following that. So all, all we'd be discussing this evening is just the felling of the trees.
Yep.
We're not talking about, we're not talking about skidding trees, we're not talking about moving anything, this is just, just cutting, physically cutting the trees down, laying them in place.
Right.
You know, there's no chipping, no chipping, no stumping, you know, no movement of the trees, that's specifically what the code says.
So I want to talk a little bit about that, a little bit about that, not as trying to get, there's a safety aspect to it. And that, and that's the only thing we're gonna say as a caveat. Our intention is to go out there, fell the trees.
Okay.
Okay? And it is not to stump or remove. As you move equipment around, there may be a benefit and for safety reasons, because if you, yeah, we have to, this is not being done by hand. Right?
No, I realize that.
So, so, and that's, and I'm putting, I don't want to get in the weeds of all that, I'm just saying, so that if someone, someone saw some, a tree tripped or two, two trees tripped in order to create, stabilize the area that a vehicle needs to go through in order to get to a tree, in order to take a tree down safely, the first thing is taking the tree down safely. And you don't want to put, you don't want to violate OSHA in order to, you know, essentially wind up in one regulatory mess because of another regulatory morass.
I, I understand where you're coming from and maybe the, you know, if the, the person that's felling the trees, they need to submit a plan to what they're looking to do, but, I mean, I don't think it's that hard for them to start at the back of the property and lay the trees down. And as they work their way forward, they just keep laying them down in that same direction. That way, when it does, when, when you are opened up to doing the chipping and, and, uh, everything else on the property that they can set up at the front of the property and then just pull everything towards them, you know, and then they can chip, you know, chip what needs to be chipped and log whatever needs to be logged at that point, working their way back into the property. So, you know, I think if, unless there's a specific plan that you have by the, by the, um, the company that's gonna cut the trees, but I think that we're, we're kind of bound to just whatever the, whatever the code says. You know, that's all, and, and basically, that's all we can do tonight.
No, and I think we're just trying, we're just trying to be open because we understand we're gonna have a lot of eyes on us and we didn't really want someone screaming that, you know, we were doing something that was inconsistent with it. We're, we're saying that there's, there may be, I don't think we're in disagreement with what you're saying. I think we're, we're looking to work from front to back, but that's, that's a separate issue.
And also, I think you, you're probably very familiar with this because this was last year, th- this section was only enacted last year. We went through a lot of discussions last year, um, at the board level, there was other projects too. Previous to last year, there was no, um, uh, there was nothing in the local law regarding it. It was at the discretion of the planning board. Um, to be honest, I mean, now, you know, now it's kind of been, you know, put into the code a little bit and we're just kind of, you know, trying to stay within the lines of what's written, um, instead of kind of opening it up and then making it appear that, you know, all the site work is starting to take place.
So given that there are a few members of the public here, so we can set ex, I, we're not disagreeing with you.
Right.
I think so we can set some expectations, I'm gonna ask Jim Cassidy, who's the, who's the site civil engineer, just to come up and sort of explain the methodology and how we anticipate going through this, so that way there are no surprises and we're all in, in understanding with each other, just quickly. And, um, it's all, you know, we submitted a plan anyway, I think that'll make that easier for everyone to work with. I understand, none of us wanted to be in this position.
Right.
You didn't want to have to do this, you wanted to sign off on the site plan, I understand that.
Well, it's, right, again, it's not-
And, you know, if the town could come with us to the meeting Thursday, Alan Chief Road at the plant at eleven in the morning to talk with, at Tri-Muni Sewer about how we and the church and the Stonegate project are all being held by this, that would be really helpful too, and we would definitely appreciate, you know, the, the town, you know, authorizing others beyond the supervisor, who's obviously a member of Tri, Tri, Tri-Muni, to attend, like, that would be great too. Whatever we could do to help foster the dialogue and resolve this problem, because, I mean, we're kind of been, being put in the position here that we're-
We're working with them on it now.
Yeah.
Tri municipal, so, I mean, it's, it's being, it's being actively worked on this, see if we can resolve, you know, the capacity issue for both your project and three other ones.
Yeah, no, we, we, we appreciate that, and we, we saw from the meeting minutes here that it went sideways for quite a while, but I'm gonna have Jim come up.
Okay. Actually, there's another microphone on the table, if you want to pick that one up.
Um, so for the record, my name's Jim Cassidy. Um, this is a plan that we presented to you last March, um, and at that point, what we're looking at doing was to remove the trees, fell the trees, uh, within the yellow area. Again, we submitted it back in November, we're back for you now, uh, requesting to remove or fell the trees in this area. I talked to our contractor, who is working with subcontractor and doing the clearing, uh, and what they would have loved to have done is basically bring in two pieces of equipment, one piece of equipment, a track machine to cut the trees, and another piece of equipment in a chipper, uh, to actually chip them and then done with the project. I understand we can't remove the trees of the site, we can't remove the stumps, uh, we're gonna need to leave the trees on site. What we would ask, um, is that we drop the piece of equipment in the front, we work from the front to the back, but when we're doing that, we would have areas where we would stockpile trees, not all one big stop, stop pile, but along, along north of the property line, um, and have them all stockpiled. That way, they're out of the way, uh, as Neil had mentioned, uh, it becomes a little problematic when we just drop a tree and we need to get around the tree and trying to move it around. Uh, the machine is gonna come in, is gonna grab the tree, is gonna cut it off at the bottom and they simply pick it up and they put it in the neat stockpile, uh, along this north of the property line until they can get to the back portion of the property. If they try to go to the back portion of the property and work their way out, um, there's a lot of trees in the way, uh, preventing them from doing that with a piece of equipment that's coming in. So at this point, you're gonna be looking to have one piece of equipment on the site to do the actual tree clearing other than the workers' pickup truck, that would be any other piece of equipment on the site. Uh, we're not bringing the chipper in at this point, but again, we'd like to have it neatly stacked so we do commence construction, uh, we can easily come in and we can either log or chip the remaining trees that need to be removed from the site.
The problem is that the code section prohibits the moving of trees, and I don't think that this board has the ability to authorize the stockpiling.
Is it moving or removing?
No, it says, um, the movement of fell trees onsite or offsite is prohibited. So they really literally have to be dropped in place.
Yeah.
Would you guys be-
So how do you bring the equipment in to begin with?
When the tree permitting has been done, it's been hand operated done, or it's been small numbers of trees where they have not had to move them, they drop them in place. So we haven't had, as far as I know, there hasn't been an application where it was to cut three point nine acres within the-
Well, this is an extraordinary application in the sense that we-
It's not permitted, no.
We've thought, you know, we would be done, I mean, it's not really-
They don't have the choice.
No, I, I understand that, I understand where you're, where, what you all are saying, um-
Are we still? Go ahead.
I mean, what this board could do tonight is authorize the permit to drop the trees in place. Then, if you wanted to, or, you know, do what this board can to give you a permit, you have two options. You can either then figure out how to drop them in place, or you can make a very quick application to the zoning board and talk to them about getting an exception from this, and I have no idea whether the timing works for that for you.
I was about to say, my, my timing would be faster to go with a mandamus action to get a court order to sign the site plan resolution. I, I, it's, it, I, it's just very fr, it's very, a very frustrating situation because we're basically, it is taking, we've been held hostage by being betwixt and between parties that are having, and we're the proxy. We're stuck in a proxy war.
And Neil, Neil-
And, and the meeting minutes are really clear, so it's not like I'm making this up. The meeting minutes are really clear of the agency as to how we're stuck in a proxy war. So I'm just trying, you know, I'm trying to be forthright-
You know they can't do anything.
What?
You know they can't do anything.
I'm, but I'm trying to be forthright in saying, we'd like to bring in one piece of equipment in order to do this in a really much more attractive way, I mean, if you do it the other way, it's just gonna be willy nilly until the, till the rest is handled.
So you want them to violate the zoning law?
No, I'm wanting them to say-
But you're asking us to change the local, you're asking us to change the local section of the law that says tree felling exception and we don't have the ability, we don't have the-
Again, I still say you, I'm sorry, John.
I, we don't have, we don't have the ability to do that.
It's still-
The town board, we worked with it, apparently, it's, last year, we worked with the town board in putting this section together.
So, so let's-
And the biggest, the biggest concern everybody has, you know, year after year after year, when it comes then to this time of the year, is that people want to be able to take the trees down because, you know, the, the closing of the window for the Indiana bat. So once the trees are on the ground, then that all goes away, you know, the bats are no longer, the bat issue is no longer an issue. And you don't have to go through the lengthy process of having to determine whether or not there are bat habitats on the property, you know, during the summer.
So, so let's, let's hit in the conversation, why can't you sign this, why can't you sign the resolution?
Because I'm, because my professionals that, that consult the board say that all the conditions have not been met at this point.
Which condition has not been met? Two of your three professionals have already signed up.
It's the Department of Health.
And where in the resolution does it actually say that a Department of Health approval is set?
I don't have the, I don't have the resolution in front of me right now.
What it says is that on page four of nineteen, on page four of ten of the resolution, what it says, because we, this is like almost Scalia-like in how limited the interpretation is occurring here. And it's frustrating because we keep getting told, well, we're not gonna bend the pencil at all for you, and I'm sort of saying, the plain letter language of your resolution says you should have signed the resolution already and we shouldn't be in this position to begin with. And I know I need something from you and I apologize if I'm irritating the people who I'm actually asking for something from, but we're stuck so hard between a rock and a hard place that has, and our ox is the one that's getting gored here- hard place that has, and our ox is the one that's getting gored here unequivocally. Because page four of ten of your resolution, what it says, because site plan approval condition number two says that the planning board adopts the approval, essentially. Where it says, you adopt the approval with certain conditions that have to be fulfilled prior to the planning board chairman endorsing the site development plan. And we have fulfilled all of them. The only time the word Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health is actually mentioned in the entire resolution is on page four. And what it says under subsection two, sub D, is that the applicant shall comply with the following items subject to the review and approval of the town engineer. Sub D one talks about a note we have to add. Sub D two says the following shall be addressed on sheet four of nineteen, site utilities plan. Sub D two, Romanet one, says notes shall be added to the plan to do blah, 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 blah. Then number two says the water connection to the existing valve on Route nine shall specify a tapping sleeve and gate valve and show the shut-off valve at the property line. Subsection D two, Romanet three, says approval from the Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health is required for the water and sewage supply facilities. That's supposed to be put onto sheet four of nineteen. It's not that we're supposed to get their sign off. That's why I'm so frustrated, because it's being engorged as to the intent. Because if you really think about it, subsection two are all the conditions we have to fulfill in order for you to sign the site plan resolution. Subsection three is what we need to do in order to get a building permit. And what it says under three for a building permit is we need a highway work permit and a structural engineer sign off, which we don't have yet. And then what it also talks about in that subsection three before a building permit is to get the town water and sewer districts approved. The order, think about the order, right?
So Neil, where do you-
We're not gonna get the, wait, hold on a second. Because we're not gonna get the health department to sign off before the district's formed. So clearly, the intent of putting it there where they put it was to get a change on the plan. It wasn't to get a health department approval, because there's no way you could get a health department approval until after the district was formed, which is put in in section three as before a building permit. So if you look at the strict construction of your own resolution, the timeline would be upside down and inside out. There's no way we could get a health department approval before you sign, but at the same time, get a building permit, which has to be done before we get the district. The district wouldn't be approved before I get, has to be approved before I can get the health department. And if you take through your position in the resolution, what you're saying is, is factually impossible to fulfill. There's no way I could get a health department approval in order to get you to sign. And then you get a district approval, the health department isn't gonna sign off before the district's formed, because how can I put sewer into someplace that doesn't have sewer approved yet? So I still say, at the top of the string here, we're ready to have you sign the resolution, and we've fulfilled the conditions, and that's the easiest way here to solve the problem.
Can I make a, can we go into an executive session to discuss this amongst ourselves?
Well, we can't go into, we need to go in for legal consultations.
That's what I mean.
So.
So, are we saying that he can't cut the trees down?
Let's not that, now, he's, he's questioning this. So here's the, here's the question.
Before we go into executive session, can I just-
According to this.
Hold on, oh, we got too many people talking at one time here. All right, so, so right now, hold on, Ralph Scott, Ralph brought up the question, we need to go into executive session for a legal consultation.
Right, I just was, I guess there was a second on that motion, but no, I'd like to just address at the outcome right now. Um, your comments that you just made were addressed to the chair as to signing the plans. It's not addressed to the board as a whole, and the board as a whole doesn't have any input on whether the plans are signed or not, it's the chair. For your purposes for tonight, for this board, you have two options, the way I see it. One is to walk out with a tree permit, and one is not to walk out with a tree permit. I think it would behoove you to see, to get this board to move to the tree clearing permit, which they seem demuncible to doing, because that's what the scope of this board can do. The board cannot allow you to move the trees on site. We can talk tomorrow about how that might occur. Possibly you have, as you've said, a meeting on Thursday at eleven AM. It's possible that your last criteria might be met, and there could be no issue to anyone signing the plans at twelve o'clock on Thursday. So this may all be moot. I don't know that this board and you, I am more than welcome to go into executive session with you, but I don't know that there's anything that the board can take as an action that would make the applicant happy and that would be within the powers of the board and not beyond the limits of what they're allowed to do under this code.
And, and, and trust me, I, we've worked through so much, the last thing I want to be doing is badgering and, and harassing and haranguing the board. I, I actually need, I think what I'm headed towards is both, which is, we'd like the tree felling permit, which is what the board can do, as far as you're comfortable doing tonight, I'm not, I want something, I don't want nothing, right? Obviously.
Okay, so that, I mean, that's what we're, again, that's why I tried explaining before, this, this got blown out of proportion here. All right, you want us to go, you want to change things, I mean, we, we're, we're only going by what, you know, has been presented to us by our professionals, okay? I can't sign off on anything until, you know, that I have confirmation from, you know, all the staff, that everything is good, you know, that all the conditions have been met in a res- resolution, you know, and then I will sign off on it. But currently, what's in front of us is the tree felling permit. If you're willing to, if you want to go ahead and have us vote upon you allowing for the tree felling, then just, they can fell the trees, and then it's not gonna put you into position where you're gonna turn around, miss the March thirty first window, and then you're gonna have to either go through a very expensive process to, you know, do a wildlife study and have to go through that, or wait until October thirty first to go ahead and, you know, move forward with the project. All right, we're not, you know, we're, we're looking to go ahead and let you do it, that way, it saves you that one expense. And at the same time, the trees will be down, there'll be no, no issues with the bats. And if this ends up being pushed past March thirty first, at least they're down, and then let's say, let's say April, for some reason, I, I'm assuming it's gonna get tied up pretty quickly, um, this whole process, I'm hoping it is. But if not, at least that's out of the way, and then from that April first to October thirty first window, at least you could start pro, you know, your project at that point. And it would be by, the first thing would be is to go ahead and chip the trees. So, that's, that's the offer that's on the table.
Yes, and we will ta, we will take that offer.
Okay.
Would it be possible to also, since we're all present and schedules are present, to calendar a meeting for this Friday, which will be after the Tri-Muni meetings, who will have a sense of what's going on, so we can work through that site plan issue that I just enunciated collectively, because that's also a secondary issue that we're gonna have to start working out. And if things, depending on what happens on Thurs-
Is this to vote on the resolution?
No, no.
You're talking about to-
So, so the tree felling's over here, thank you, yes, we will take everything you're offering, and we appreciate it. We also appreciate your latitude in expressing the frustration we've had relative to the overall issues that, many of which don't relate to you, as, as was well put by your attorney. Thursday is this big Tri-Muni meeting. It's being suggested to us that the, there has been a breakdown, which is going to lead to a breakthrough. And what I'm sort of saying is, okay, that would be great if that happens on Thursday, but what if it doesn't happen till Thursday? I have no basis to get on an agenda, you don't meet again until early March. Could we have a stopgap meeting with your staff on Thursday to confirm everything's been done and what we can or can't do in order to get towards site work beyond the tree felling that you're doing tonight? Because the only thing, my understanding, that's holding up us obtaining a site work permit to do all the work that's related to site work, is this issue relative to I and I and Tri-Muni Sewer, Sewer.
So you're looking for a meeting on Friday between the consultants and Bruce. We don't need a full board meeting for that.
Correct, correct, correct.
That's fine with me, if that's acceptable to the other consultants and Bruce, I don't know what you're thinking about.
So there'd be myself and, and staff.
Me and Pete and Dave, no, Dave.
I don't think I need to be there.
Dave doesn't need to be there.
Okay.
Three of us, four of us.
Thank you.
But there'd be, there'd be Friday.
At any time you want on Friday that works.
Okay, I'd have to, I'd have to check, I'd have to check my availability at work to see if I can make that happen.
Underst, understood. If not, we would meet with just staff and, and work through it, because I think there's a little bit of a, we need to communicate further as to way, confirm that there's no gap other than that issue. And then, then we can get creative as to how to solve those issues. You all haven't gotten creative relative to-
Well, if there, if there's gonna be a meeting regarding this, I'd like to be there only because-
Understood.
There's been a lot of, there's been a lot going on, and if I'm there, at least I can relay back to the board, to the board members that have questions regarding it prior to another meeting. You know, because usually we don't, we don't hear about these things, uh, sometimes until we actually come to the workshop meeting, so.
Understood, understood.
So, uh, Neil, I, I have a question. So assuming the board approves the, uh, tree, tree felling, um, permit, and being that there's going to be a, uh, uh, machine out there moving around the site, the machine's obviously gonna make like ruts, kind of tear up, you know, the ground, I assume, well, I shouldn't say we assume, I want to make sure there's gonna be, uh, erosion control.
Yeah, we outlined it in the, um, the, the sequence in the, the, um, the request we put in for you, that the erosion control-
Again, I didn't see this because I was away.
It's, it's essentially taken from the beginning of our SWIP.
Well, that's part of it, and then, but there's also a separate part for separate erosion and controls related just to the dropping of the trees, and then there's also the SWIP protections that are in there, so.
All right, well, this also requires to have a, a pre, pre-con, so that's other, we can, we can discuss other things.
We should have a map showing the construction entrance you're going to use.
So, I mean, we're dropping one piece of equipment off, and then we'll be taking it out. Do we want to really dig up the front area to construct a construction entrance at this point?
To some of them, we need to know where you're going.
Well, we could, we could come in through the act.
The board is everything, they'd like to know where, and that can be discussed at-
Sure, we can, we can add it to this plan, yeah.
And, and the treasure erosion control that we will be putting in place, and then once the permit is in, the town engineer, we'll need to go put together a construction, pre-construction meeting for the felling of trees only. But remember, if they approve this tonight, this restoration bond has to get put onto the town board agenda next Monday.
Where, where does that say that, because it was approved by your consultant as to amount, where does it say that that has to occur?
All bonds have to be-
All restoration, performance, maintenance bonds are approved like that.
And that's March ninth?
Yeah, whatever that's gonna be. February ninth, don't give me that.
February ninth, sorry.
Yeah.
These don't, don't make, don't-
You want to come March ninth?
No, no, February ninth's good.
Is the planning board clear about how much ne, how much, uh, the people of Fowler House and this community are against this project? Because there's been a cutoff as far as communication. Public hearings were, uh, eliminated pretty quickly in the process. I just want to make sure when you're making these decisions, I know that there was an attempt to make the boards autonomous, but there's been a huge miscommunication. People don't want this project, we want to protect the homes of Fowler House. They were there before this town grew up around them, and they've been protected. They were our teachers and our social workers, they paid their taxes, they gave to this community, and you're taking away the value of the home, their privacy, the beauty of their homes.
Can I ask you a question? What business would you like to see on that site?
A small one, that's all. If you're a government, this is the way to-
All right, hold on, all right, so, right now, uh, this is, this is not a public hearing, and I, I gave you the, I gave you the opportunity, hold on.
There's never been an opportunity for people to speak, when are we gonna get a chance to talk?
I, I understa, okay.
I don't want to be sharing out this meeting.
I understand everybody's, please, please, I understand your frustration, I do, okay? I can't, this is not, this, we've had public hearings on this already.
And you cut him out way too soon. I just want to make sure that he knows in their heart what's going on in this community. Because this, we need to cut it, did anybody here read the twelve-page letter from Ryan and Christine Xander? Did anybody see the town board, the public hearings for the town court for September sixth and September twenty third?
We did, yes.
When the people were practically in tears. You have to know what you're doing here.
I have to-
This is not all about rules and regs, and I will be quiet at this point. This is not one of these, it won't be forgotten.
And just to explain the process to you, the developer has come in with a project that they've designed as per the regulations in the zoning code, okay? We've worked with them, I mean, I believe all the neighbors had met with them just about after every meeting, in the hallway after, um, and then the next time that they came in to present, there was changes made to those plans, uh, in front of, you know, that were brought to, to the board, um, you know, with revisions. Uh, we had a public hearing, um, all the items during the public hearing were addressed.
Mr. Fowler, no, for the argument that the process was done, it just went crazy.
But unfortunately, we've gone, we've gone through the process, we can't deny the project, it's an as-of-right development. There was one item that wasn't in conformance with the zoning code, and those were parking requirements. The applicant went to the zoning board, and they got a variance for the parking requirement.
I know all this, Mr. Fowler.
Okay, I, I know we, we, I, I do, we do un-
We still had a horrible mistake in our town.
We do understand your frustration, but this is, this is what's been set up, I mean, the zoning for different parcels in the property have been determined by the, uh, town board over the years. Uh, many years ago, many years ago-
Ian Duran bought that property knowing that Fowler House is right on the side of their, of that property. They knew it, okay, which took away the value of that property from them, not from the people on Fowler House. And I'm so glad to see Mr. Payfer here today, because I can't even get the people here because they're hopeless, and they think we don't give a darn about them. And these are the people of our town.